All right, then why don't we open up? First order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. And we have September 11th, November 13th, and December 11th in our packets. We are going to strike September 11th because we're going to make another change. So therefore, we only have November 13th and December 11th to dispose of if there's a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Am I second if I'm voting today?
All right. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Aye, all opposed? No.
Well, I am not voting on December meeting minutes.
No, I know, that's fine.
Okay. So I'm not voting.
I'll take your idea.
It is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing of Brian Flanagan, 52 Prescott Street. Feel free to come on up. Same as always, please introduce and identify yourself, name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Flanagan. I have Line Drive Realty, and that's the -- I'm here today to discuss with you folks. Is that what I should be discussing right now?
The floor is yours.
Sure, okay. So thanks, first of all, for meeting with me again regarding this matter. The reason I'm here, 52 to 54 Prescott is currently a two-family home, and I'm looking to make it into three separate condo units. The plan is to not change the footprint of the building at all. It's simply to make use of the attic space that exists there now. So basically, the -- at our last meeting, there were parking and so forth. Different types of things were discussed, and, you know, some current concerns were raised with regards to parking. So what I did was I went back to the -- my land surveyor and basically, you know, discussed what we had talked about in our first meeting, and I made modifications. The modifications, I guess, or I guess, you know, just to kind of discuss the new plan that I have now. The current spaces that you see, I guess, here, down below, so basically on Prescott, so this is Prescott Street here, as you can see, there are three parking spaces: here, here, pole, and then here. So those would remain the same. Originally, at our last meeting, I had proposed adding three spaces directly above those spaces there. As I mentioned, there were concerns and so forth regarding, you know, traffic and so forth. So what I did was I moved the spaces over to the other side on Mount Vernon Street to just allow for ample room and so forth. So basically, that's pretty much what I did there. The two spaces down here on Prescott would correspond to the second unit, and this is just for flow, ease of use, that type of thing. Units one and three would be over here because the entrance to their, or the easiest entrance to their, you know, kind of kitchen area, you know, is here for unit one and here for unit three. I went ahead and, you know, did a walkway and patio. The patio would be for, really for unit three because tied to the home right now, there are existing decks or porches, what have you. So the first floor has a porch here. The second floor, there's a deck on the Prescott Street side, and then I was thinking for the third floor, those folks could have a patio as they exit their, you know, their entrance here. They would have a patio there. In addition, I propose the catch basin with a leaching field here to address one of the concerns from one of the abutters regarding some water accumulating down in the far corner of the property. Other than that, I mean, I did add some proposed hedge trees, things like that, you know, aesthetic purposes. So as you're kind of traveling down Prescott this way, instead of having to see, you know, a big, you know, area for parking and so forth, I have hedge and so forth right here. So that's kind of, you know, blocking that area. A proposed tree here, same type of thing, Japanese maple, I was thinking something like that, but I guess I didn't want to get into, you know, too much specifics at this point. But, and I think that's pretty much it, that the, you know, these different areas, I'm looking to do like a permeable driveway, you know, that just for -- that seems to be the, you know, the new way to do things. It's more green and so forth. So that's kind of what I'm proposing to do on all of this dotted area that you see here. I think that's pretty much it at this point that I wanted to convey.
All right. Well, thank you for the summation. Thank you for the new plan, and thank you for the thoughtful and in my knee-jerk reactionary estimation for your, you know, addressing, I think, what were the three points that were requested of you at the end of the meeting last month, which were the parking, flooding, and landscaping. So I will open it up, or I'm not really opening it up, but the board is certainly welcome to ask any further questions. I guess perhaps I would look up and down the row and say, are these the kind of things that you had in mind when we were talking last month? If it's not, then I think we should, let's air it out.
Yeah, I think this was, this is what I was hoping for when we talked about moving the parking spots into the other side. And the portion, the area between the parking and the street here with the dotted line, that's just an easement zone, or what is that exactly? Like, what is that going to look like?
So the, I don't think that there is any, there are no obstructions, so that there isn't a curb there.
Okay.
I verified that from our last meeting.
Yeah.
You know, so it's really just kind of flow right into the parking area.
Okay.
Yep.
Forgive me for not being here last month, but I do have a question on the front parking spots that you have. I mean, it looks like they're in the street, and I'm sure it was addressed. I didn't see it in the minutes, but how can you include a parking spot in the street? Why didn't you move them back farther onto the property? Move your walkway and move it further back?
Well, those are actually existing right now.
Correct.
And so it does look, it doesn't look that way. So basically, the street...
I do see a picture that you have provided.
Okay. So basically, when you actually park in that area, the amount of whatever, concrete, the pavement right now allows for a vehicle to, you know, you pull up to that, you know, into the space, and I, you know, if you're, I guess, the front of your vehicle is at the front of, you know, where the pavement ends, at the front there, the tail end of the vehicle is not on the street, even though it kind of does appear that way here. I don't know what the, I mean, I'm not a surveyor. I can get clarification certainly, but...
So I'm looking at parking spots out of your lot? Off your lot?
On the lot, yes.
Off your lot? Not even on your lot? Your lot line? It's over your lot line?
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, you know, it is a parking area off the street. It's not, it's certainly not on the street.
But you want to include these on your plan. You want to include these three spots on your plan that are not on your property. They're halfway on your property, and the other part is on the street off your lot line.
That I don't know, though. I don't know if the answer to that is yes or no.
That's what it looks like here.
Okay. It certainly does. I mean, I would agree.
So my question to you, why don't you move your walkway further up?
Very easily done, yeah.
So you can have...
Exactly. If that's the case, and this really, I mean, I'll...
Is the lot line wrong? I mean, is it, should be part of the street? I mean, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you have drawn here. And who drew this?
So I think, so it's not uncommon, but we see that people are routinely using parts of the street. I mean, my home is a corner lot, and there's probably an eight-foot strip of land that doesn't go all the way to the street. I mean, so there's land, and then there's streets. So what you would think is the lot line is the street, it's not. It's actually on the property. In this case, the lot line is on the property, but the use is quite different, I guess. So I'm not suggesting that this is something that makes me jump up for joy as a technical matter. If I'm looking at this plan, I would ask the same question that you are, Ellen, which is why aren't your parking spaces on your land? The practical reality, just, you know, the photographs in front of us suggest that the curb, I mean, the curb's out here. So why would a homeowner not use what is available to him or her? On a plan, it looks bad.
Is there a sidewalk there?
On the photograph? There's, no, there's not.
There's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk. So the risk that the landowner has is that the town may one day say, well, we're going to widen the street, or the town may say, move your parking spaces, and in that instance, then we'll obviously be incumbent on the homeowner.
For me, I see opportunity for those to be moved up and have a clean plan. There's no reason for, there's not a tree block in here. There's nothing, well, there is on, I'm assuming that you've taken down the shrubs, but I see there's no reason for you to move those onto your actual lot. I won't approve, me, myself, I won't approve this like this. I mean, so to, you can't include half-space because it's not a legal parking spot in my mind. This is not a legal parking spot to include in your parking calculations because it's not on your property. It's not the definition of a legal parking spot.
So the reason, I hear you, I think that there is a good reason, and that is, why include another five feet of impermeable surface when you can leave it as is? Why make, why force parking further into the lot, therefore consuming more of the lot?
But how can you include that as a legal parking spot? It's not. It's not the definition of a legal parking spot. I understand what you're saying. Why create more?
But it's previously existing, so it's not, he's not asking for a variance for that parking spot.
Yes, he is. He's asking for a variance on parking.
He's asking for a variance on the other parking spots.
On all of it. Well, he's changing this, so no matter what happens, he's asking a variance for that parking. He's not asking for a variance, he's asking for a special permit to include that third unit, which includes these parking spots. So he has to meet this parking requirement. These do not meet in my definition of a parking spot. So I can't include those in my calculations, is what I'm saying, is what I'm looking at.
Let me say something.
Of course.
How old do you think this house is? Take a guess.
Pretty old.
Forty, fifty, sixty?
Maybe something like that, yeah.
Ellen, they've been parking their cars over there for the last forty, fifty, sixty years.
Well, they weren't here forty, sixty years ago. Right here he is now, and now you make it right.
Yeah, but since the house was built, they've been parking there.
I understand that.
I don't see the issue.
You know what?
I understand your concern, and I get it. In my opinion, it's been there all this year, it's white-changer. Okay?
I understand.
Okay, he's accommodated parking.
Can you make it a condition?
On the other side.
But it's not a definition of a legal parking.
I understand. I appreciate the concern.
For me, I have hesitation and...
But it's an old, old...
I get it.
Existing house in an old, old existing neighborhood.
Be a new house.
George Washington probably slept in this house.
And his teeth are probably still there.
And he parked his carriage. Really, he parked the carriage. He didn't have a car.
I get it. But you're here in an opportunity to make something right. It doesn't, because it's been existing for forty years, doesn't mean it's right, though. That's the whole thing.
So he moves it up a little bit, okay?
Correct. That's all I'm saying. I can't include those in my definition.
Sure, and I can certainly appreciate, you know, your opinion. The one thing, though, is if I did move it up, move these spaces up, one concern from the prior meeting was folks backing into this pole that exists here. So if I were to move up these spaces, it increases the chance of somebody banging into that pole. Whereas now, it's pretty much an impossibility where, you know, you kind of just, the pole is there, you can't back into it. Whereas if you're up there, you could be backing up into it.
What's, I see the telephone pole in the picture. So by moving a spot five feet up...
So if you move the spaces up, there's just a greater chance mathematically of banging into the pole if you back your vehicle up. Whereas right now, you can't because the pole is almost next to the spaces it was to. If I'm up here now, I don't know where that pole is, and I could back into the pole. It's just, it's something that came up, and I figured I'd mention it.
So my other question is, can you include parking in the front house? I thought our definition is parking cannot, like, the definition, I'm trying to find it, and I'm having a hard time, I'm sorry, with the new numbers. Twenty-some-plus years of the old numbers, seven point in, four point three. I thought you couldn't include parking in the front of a, I thought it had to be on the sidewalks.
But he's been doing this since the last fifty years, since the house was built.
That doesn't make it right, though, Ellen. That's the whole thing.
He's been doing it, the house is there, the parking is there.
And by, and zoning law has changed.
He's not making any material change to the exterior of the building.
He's adding another unit.
But is he making, is he making a material, renovation to the exterior of the building? The exterior of the building stays just the way it is.
He's not changing the footprint of the building, but he is making changes to the exterior. He is, you're putting a new roof in, you're having to put a staircase up to the back. Or is there already one? So how do you...
There already is one.
So there's already one there? So there's a covered porch, or you're gonna, there's gonna be renovations done to this house exterior-wise?
I'm sure the neighbors liked the renovations that are going to happen to this house.
That's, well, when they speak up, I'll find out. Again, because it was done fifty years ago doesn't mean it's right.
Yeah, but you're not going to rebuild the whole town in North End. It was settled in sixteen hundred dollars.
One application at a time. I'm trying, Ellen.
I get where you're coming from. Your opinion, my opinion.
So again, to include a calculation of an illegal parking spot is, just doesn't work for me because someone's going to hit a pole. I can't include those. And I just think the board should take caution on that as well.
Understood. And I don't have an issue with something that's pre-existing such as this. Opinions naturally vary.
And my view is that it feels like it's punishing someone for wanting to revitalize a space to not allow them to keep pre-existing components. I definitely respect the idea that if he were designing those parking spots now, we would not allow them the way they are. But I don't know if it makes sense to sort of insist that he change the things that are already there.
But there's an opportunity, there's space and opportunity to have that done. Because he doesn't want to move a walkway, it's not a reason to make a legal spot. There's an opportunity to right a wrong here.
I haven't heard the applicant say he was unwilling to move the walkway, so that's an unfair characterization.
Because it's a pole, I'm sorry.
Doesn't have anything to do with the pole. These are the parking spaces that are existing currently. That's all. The applicant has actually indicated that he's happy to get a plan that moves them, and it's the board and myself and Ellen included which are saying that, I'm not sitting here saying I think that that's necessary. These are established parking spaces. I hear it loud and clear. It doesn't necessarily make it right, but it certainly makes it tolerated. It certainly makes it acceptable in my eyes. We didn't hear anybody at the last meeting, we may hear it tonight, didn't hear anybody at the last meeting say, you got to move those parking spaces back six feet. Nobody said that. People said, let's move some of the parking to Mount Vernon Street.
I drove by the property, and I, I'm going to say that it certainly seems consistent with all the other property. I mean, and so this is not protruding, so to me, it certainly appears to be the norm for Prescott.
Can I say something else?
I hope you will.
Am I calling to the right? Use the proper word, to your right, tools. Why punish the man? That was a good adjective.
I didn't...
Punish. That was a very good adjective. Why punish a man for something like this? That's all I wanted to say.
I didn't want to take the bait, but I would consider that to be an unfair characterization as well. It's not punishing somebody to try to make them be in conformance with the letter of the code.
He used the right phrase.
It may have a cost to it, but it's far from a punishment.
Can I ask you, is there a reason why that you don't, would you be willing to move them back, and is there a reason why you would or not be willing to?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's something, I just, I don't know, I put some time into this, and I just feel as though the walkway flows nicely now with the existing current walkway leading into the house. Be more of a ninety-degree angle. I mean, it's something I could, I don't know, certainly consider.
So the parking spaces, so what we're going to end up with is parking spaces that are no longer nine by eighteen, they're going to be nine by twenty-five. So what we're going to end up with effectively is an opportunity for tandem parking because people are going to park there anyway. Again, I'm not saying it's right. I'm just saying that if a unit owner has a twenty-five-foot spot, they're going to park two cars there. I would if I were a unit owner. So in effort to make this technically a legal parking space, you are opening, I think you'd be opening the door, in fact, welcoming a doubling of parking on Prescott Street from three cars to six cars.
So let me ask you, how busy is Prescott Street in traffic-wise?
It's probably fair to ask that of the abutters since they were the ones that were verbalizing the concern.
I'm asking the applicant, I was just curious.
Understood.
I mean, I don't live there, but, you know, with that said, I don't see a whole ton of cars driving up and down the street. Maybe, I don't know, one every minute or so.
Oh, so you, all right, so you don't, all right. Because my concern is if you put it up a little further, then you have opportunity to at least back out of, instead of right into the street, back and right into the street. I mean, even though there's an opportunity to add another parking spot, there's an opportunity to make it easier to back into, back out of into Prescott safely.
Yep.
So with the pros, there are cons.
And the safe exit from the parking spaces were certainly something that was discussed.
And I think by moving it up might address the issue.
Yep. We can double up the car so we can have six cars backing out into Prescott Street. But again, the board is always balancing one, you know, one pro versus a con. So it's whatever is, whatever the board has as a priority or the individual members have as priorities.
It's tough to argue with a lawyer.
It's tough to argue with a woman.
Oh. All right, Kevin, we're just going to call you Kevin.
You're not going to meet your woman out there, eh? You gotta meet your woman.
That's why I'm calling him Kevin for the rest of the night.
Then therein lies the collegiality of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, all righty.
So anything else on the board's mind?
Is there a limit on the width of a curb cut for these spaces?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I could probably not answer it accurately, but because it's not a state, it's not, the building inspector who used to come to our meetings, don't, who doesn't come anymore, used to be our advisor, we just have no one anymore. We used to be able to ask them technical questions like that, but when they do, they'll be able to address the curb cut and when they do inspect it, when they do the as-built, they'll address all those building code issues. But, and I think because it's a town, it's not as strict as the state curb cuts.
I'm not opposed to it, to that side. They just didn't want to open it.
Run into trouble when he tried to do it.
They'll, they'll catch it on the as-built side of it.
Thank you for that. Is there anything else?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to also add in, they'll also catch the safety point, like the, you have to have the staircase and all those issues of making it the third.
The rest, yeah.
The FIA codes and...
But I will go with the building private.
Correct. Nobody's asking about the curb cut, too, so.
Anything else from the board or shall we invite the gallery?
I think I'm good, Rick.
All right. If you have anything else, I'm not trying to shoo you away, just trying to move this along.
Sure, sounds great.
Thanks so much.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone in gallery that wishes to be heard on this? Come on up. Same standard, if you wouldn't mind kindly introducing yourself, name and address, please.
Kent Oakars, 55 Prescott Street. I was here at the last meeting, reviewed the plans online, and I had safety concerns as you did, about six cars. And based on what I saw online, I just, I came tonight to tell Mr. Flanagan, thank you for cleaning up a nice sort of neighborhood and to being so responsive to neighbors.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. To the folks who don't come to these things regularly, this is a rarity, that we have an applicant that actually addresses the concerns of the board and the gallery, and then the gallery actually acknowledges the, acknowledges that. So thank you both for that. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Andrea Beckcourt, 13 and 15 Mount Vernon. Yes, the neighborhood is ecstatic that something is being done with this property. I have to second that. Just a question on the number of parking spaces. I think we were talking about six cars, but it looks like the plans show seven spaces? So I didn't, I just wanted clarification on that. Four on the side and three, so seven total parking? So it'd be seven total spaces.
One is labeled "yes." But yes.
And then the other question I have was just around the water, the, that corner where the leaching field is and back by the shed, I think it's probably the northeast corner, that's the lowest part of the lot and the abutters. So that's where water collects. So the question was around the proposed drainage system. Was there soil test done? What kind of soil is there? What's the capacity for the, for the leaching field and the, the catch basin? Just those questions around, you know, the, what type of studies were done to make sure that the water's properly...
Okay, I'm not going to answer that question. Certainly, there is something in the, in the plan now, so when, when we get back to the applicant, we'll certainly ask.
Okay.
What kind of legwork was done behind.
Okay.
And what kind of capacity this thing might be. It could very well be that just the proposed catch basin and the leach field could just be conceptual at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I may ask real quick, what is your view on the depth of those three parking spots along the street?
Going...
So the, the three ones along Prescott Street, do they, as they sit now and as, you know, cars are parked in it now, are they, do they stick out more than other houses on the street? Do they get in the way?
Honestly, there's, I've only seen one car ever parked there.
Sure.
So it's pretty innocuous the way it is right now.
Okay.
So it's really hard to say. It's not like there's always been three cars parked there.
Sure, sure.
It's been years, it's just no one's really been there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a tough, tough question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to be heard? All right, seeing and hearing none, want to come back up, please? So it sounds like the question that we heard was regarding the, the catch basin and the leach field. Maybe you could tell us a little bit more, if anything, about it.
Honestly, it's, it's just a concept at this point. I haven't done any testing on the, on the soil or anything like that. You know, I'm going to analyze basically how the water is getting there in the first place. You know, I, you know, it's, it's a concept at this point.
Understood, and it's not uncommon to withhold that kind of, that kind of study and that kind of design until you get an, get an approval. So I certainly understand that pause.
Did your, your survey put it on the plan? Did he put it in the low spot? Did he have elevations?
There aren't elevations at this point. I just mentioned the fact that, you know, in that, in that first initial meeting, the concern was raised, so, you know, he mentioned, okay, yeah, so, you know, this is, this was the game plan to...
Conceptually, it was there.
Right, right.
All right, is there anything else from the board for the applicant? I don't hear anything. Once, twice, three times, anyone in the gallery wishing to be heard? Then I suggest perhaps it's appropriate to close public comment?
I'm motioning to close the public comment.
I second. Do we know who's voting today? Because we've got six of us here.
Good question.
It's Michael and Steve because they were appointed before.
Okay.
Right, right.
Okay, so Paul, Ellen, Alan, Mike and Steve, okay.
I'm actually going to have you vote since you listened to, I know, even though I'm a regular board member, you had, you were here for both of them.
Frank is the one not voting.
Frank, so you were here for both of them?
Yeah.
And so out of fairness, I mean, I just think it would be only fair to have you take my vote. I'm doing that.
Are you telling which way to vote?
I'll just get you after in the parking lot.
All right, thank you for that, then. There was a motion to close public comment, that motion was seconded. All in favor of closing public, public comment and moving to deliberation?
Aye.
Aye, on your opposed. Nope, that's unanimous, so now the board shall deliberate on the applicant, application of Brian Flanagan. Any thoughts?
To me, it's all been in. Everything's been said.
Okay.
I, I think it's a very, you know, thoughtfully laid-out response to the concerns that were put forward, you know, to the comment from the gallery. There is one more parking spot now than is, you know, strictly required of the, of the property, but no one seems to be particularly upset with the number that are on Mount Vernon Street, which is where basically one would be added or removed. And the neighbors don't seem to be, they have not expressed concern over the depth of those three parking spots that are on Prescott Street. And so I feel like this is, you know, the best possible response, you know, list of changes that you could have for this property.
Thank you.
I agree. I think he's done a nice job of being responsive to the feedback at last month's meeting.
Thank you for that. All right, perhaps, perhaps that is the, the end of deliberations. Mr. Kusia would be, you'd be interested in making a motion?
I, I make a motion to grant the applicant the request for a special permit pursuant to the Town Hall at the end of the zoning bylaw section 195-4.3 N4A for conversion of a two-family home to three condominium units in the R4 zoning district. And I'd like to reference the plan dated 12/1818 by Mr. J. Jazarus, am I saying that correctly?
Jeros, maybe?
Jeros, okay. Of the plan of land in the North Andover, which references the parking places and the shrubbery, has been discussed at the zoning meeting.
Do you want to, you should make, make mention of that for the record as well, just the unit plans submitted.
I also like to make mention of the architectural drawings from Cabernet Architectural Collaborative of 128 Warren Street in Lowell, for the plans of 52 Prescott Street, which references a first-floor apartment, a second-floor apartment, and a third-floor apartment. And I can't read the date, I'm sorry.
I know it's tiny, tight, and I'm not concerned.
So you think your eyes are better than mine?
Not her eyes, her glasses are better, there's a...
Okay, her glasses are stronger?
Nope.
Nope.
Motion made, is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, why don't I go down the line?
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for me.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous, the special permit is approved.
You want this?
Sure, thanks.
Thank you very much. You don't need anything from him tonight, do you?
Folks, thanks very much.
From?
No, I'll let him go, I'll go.
Okay.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the petition of Michael Thomas, Michael Thomas and Cornelius Donovan, 470 50530, Boxford Street. Mr. Clerk, would you open us up?
This is a little confusing to me because having been here before already, years, okay. Before I read this, can I ask a question that's completely off the cuff here?
Sure.
And I understand there was the blending of the lots, and then it went to planning and conservation, and you asked for an extension, and we're here now, I guess, for the final blessing of it. Did you have to re-advertise this for this meeting?
Yes.
You had to notify all the abutters?
Yes.
It was just a question I had. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall at 120 Main Street, at the end of a Mass on Tuesday, January 8, 2019, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Michael Thomas and Cornelius Donovan, the property located at 470 500 530 Boxford Street, map 105.0C, parcels 041, 42 and 43, North Andover Mass, in the R1 zoning district. The petitioner was previously granted dimensional variances for minimum contiguous building area, CBA, pursuant to Article 7 of the zoning bylaw for two proposed new lots to be located at 470 500 530 Boxford Street to allow for a lot line adjustment between the properties currently depicted as assessed as map 105.0C, parcels 41, 42, and 43, to consolidate three lots and create the two proposed lots. The existing variances include conditions with respect to proposed building plans, locations, and design. Minor modifications to the building plans and footprint have been proposed. The petitioner seeks a finding to confirm that the revised plans are in compliance with the conditions in the existing variance decision and/or to amend or modify the existing variance decision so as to approve the proposed modification and endorse the new plans. As always, application and supporting material are available at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover Mass, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8 to 4, Tuesday from the hours of 8 to 5:30, and Friday from the hours of 8 to 11:30. By order of the Board of Appeals, Mr. D. Paul Clark Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counsel, if you would make the introductions.
Brian Vaughn for Small Island Vaughn, Mike Dunbin is with me tonight, and I'm sure a few of you who are on the board remember this matter. We before you a number of times. We had three pre-existing non-conforming lots, one of which had a house on it. We basically merged them and obtained a variance for creating two buildable lots and raising the existing structure. The two new lots comply in all respects with zoning with, except for the exception of contiguous buildable area. We did receive a variance for the contiguous buildable area. However, we were subject to other permitting, and we were in front of the Conservation Commission for quite a long time, probably about eight months, maybe. So they had some real concerns, but we worked through all of their concerns, and they were satisfied with our final plan, which required a slight modification to the, the footprint and layout of the buildings as we had originally proposed to you. They, the changes they had actually have no relation or effect or impact upon the variance that was granted, which was for contiguous buildable area. However, the Mylar plan that we had originally submitted showed the footprints on it, and the building plans, which we had submitted as the board regularly requires plans, were included by reference as construction shall be consistent with those plans. My understanding, the board, when they approve that, they want to have some sense of what they're approving for the, the lot. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that those plans are referenced for exact dimensional requirements as to what you're, what you're building, so I think there's some flexibility and consistency. So I do think that the plans that we have submitted are substantially consistent with what we have, just with a different layout. The, the very specific changes, the, there were two ephemeral pools on the property, and there were setbacks from the ephemeral pools, and one of which had protected species in it, and they wanted a further setback from that one. The other one did not have any species identified in it, and so, you know, one of them, they wanted a 50-foot setback, the other one they wanted a 75-foot setback. So we had to move some things around, the...
Do you have a plan that shows the differences?
Between what? What was, what you're going to change it?
Um...
Because I don't have my prior application, so, I mean, it'd be helpful for you to say in what you changed, so.
The, I'll show you.
And what you submitted is, it's going to, doesn't show the difference, the changes.
I do.
And you can talk all about it, but visually seeing it sometimes is...
I understand, and I will show you one thing. This is just a 3D rendering. The major changes, really, before, it was really the driveways and the garages. Before, the driveways went off to the side with the garages coming under from the sides. As proposed now, they wanted to pull the driveways outside of the buffer zones, resulting in direct-on entry from the front. So this is just a 3D rendering of what's newly proposed.
I think we have that in our packet, too.
So in other words, before, those red doors were on the side of the house.
Realizing exactly this, that... Hold on for one second, Mike. It's on, I mean, that there was some turnover on the board, and this was a while ago. I had provided the board with my only copy of the prior plan, so I don't have it anymore, but this is just a copy of what's already in the file of what was submitted in the prior.
Okay.
Right. Okay. So, as you can see from this rendering versus what was approved before, we're asking for very consistent architectural design, look, feel, the primary change being before, the driveways were coming from the side underneath. Now, in order to pull them out, it's going straight, straight in from the front.
So what else is different on the lot? I mean, you moved the location of the homes, I mean, sometimes it just helps to show...
And what I asked the engineer to do as well, and I can show you on this mission. This was the prior septic, septic plan that was originally submitted, and this shows the structure in the driveway overlaid on it in red is what was, was there before versus what is there now.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see the difference being on this particular lot, we've got the same footprint, is just this driveway is different, you know, the red lies over where it is now. On the second lot, same thing, you can see here the deck, which was originally in the back, they swung it over to the left side. This is, the hard part is that this is the new structure. There's a little jog here where the house used to come out, and then it comes down, down here, so it's just extended out a few feet this way and in a few feet this way. Again, the driveway on the prior one in red is now coming straight in from the front. And those are all of the changes as to the footprint and, and the driveways. One other thing that, that was changed on, on this plan, it doesn't really show well, and I don't think that you have any concern, the, the leaching fields were shifted slightly a few feet just to bring them from, you know, 72 feet to roughly 75 feet, I believe it was, to get it right outside of them, so.
Does that affect any of the, the variances we gave you?
No, no. It, it doesn't affect any of the, you know, because the variance was strictly for CBA, contiguous buildable area, and that's based on the wetland line, so that doesn't change no matter where the houses are. And all of these changes are still conforming, fully conforming to zoning. The only reason that we're here seeking approval is because there was a condition that construction shall be substantially in accordance with the plans we submitted because you require floor plans and architecturals.
Right.
So, you know, with, with the, the slight changes, we submitted just revised, revised plans. Again, I think it could be a judgment call that could be subject to dispute. My personal opinion is that the new plans are consistent, just better to be safe than sorry, let you know exactly what we're looking to do, and because the old Mylar plan shows a footprint on it that is never going to be built, it's probably better and less confusing to the world when they go to the registry deeds not to see a plan recorded that is going to have a footprint on it that may not exist.
Can I ask you something? Why didn't you ask us for a modification as opposed to submitting a whole new application? Did you deem this as a major modification yourself, or...
No, originally, I, originally I actually filed a thinking that it wasn't, it wasn't a major modification. However, just prior to the original hearing, it was suggested, you know, it may or may not be on, erring on the side of caution, I think Paul suggested, why don't we notify the abutters? So before we hear it, and that's why it was continued at the original...
I thought it was continued because it wasn't advertised.
It wouldn't need to be advertised if, if it was just...
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't, um, yeah, there was some gray area.
Right, it only would need to be advertised if it, if it was a major modification or a modification.
Yeah, there was a little gray area, so, I mean, so you're just going on, on caution?
Absolutely, on caution, and quite frankly, I didn't, I didn't argue it just because...
I consider, I would consider it a major modification, just an FYI, so...
And I, and I would say, I would consider it a major modification if our variances that we had sought related to any of these dimensional issues, but my opinion was that the variances actually relate to CBA, and there is no, no change in, in CBA. If, it's all on how you interpret, I guess, the condition that's in, in, in the permit.
But you know me, I'm so, yeah.
I understand. I think Paul said, I think what I heard him say is that it's hard to argue with that one.
So, all right, so. Just, I'm sorry, I was just doing a quick clarification.
You should never apologize for questions. Anything for the applicant from the board? Nothing? Is that a prelude to a question?
Me?
Yeah, okay.
My only question is, like she said, it couldn't have been done under a modification, but you answered the question, better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and particularly in this case where, you know, it, it was contested. We had abutters at, our prior hearing here, we had abutters at the Conservation Commission. So, you know, I'm, I'm okay with...
That was the only question, I mean, I think she was correct, so why not, but better safe than sorry, I get it.
All right, well, thank you. Why don't you stay put? Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this? Nope. Okay, seeing and hearing none.
I make a motion to close the public comment.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously closed. The board shall deliberate the matter before us.
Yeah, I think at some point we exhausted this prior, because this had gone on, I think, for a couple of months here, yeah, so...
I suspect you're, I suspect you're right about that, and hearing that the, the variances that were granted were really only for CBA, this doesn't feel extraordinarily impactful. Nonetheless, I was absolutely tripping over trying to figure out what the changes act... Nonetheless, I was absolutely tripping over trying to figure out what the changes actually were. So having your questions and Attorney Vaughn's descriptors, and certainly the follow-up rendering.
The images helped a lot.
Was the most helpful. Yeah, so, thank you for that. And that's really all. I, I don't have anything really to add.
Yeah, no, I think I'm good.
I'll give you again.
It's voting?
Same.
Same, same.
Do I have to be the...
Well, yeah, I'm going to vote on this one.
Oh, yeah.
I am going to be in the, yes, you're out.
All right, then. Mr. Clerk, is there a motion?
I make a motion to grant the variance to Michael Thomas and Cornelius Donovan, a property located at 470-500-530 Barksman Street, map 105.0C, parcels 41, 42, 43, North End of Mas, in the R1 zoning district. The variance will be granting dimensional variances for minimum contiguous buildable area, CBA pursuant to Article 7 of the zoning bylaws, with two proposed new lots to be located, to be located at 470-500-530 Barksman Street, to allow for lot line adjustment between the properties currently depicted as assessed as map 105.0C, parcels 41, 42, and 43. To consolidate three lots and create the two proposed new lots, the existing variances include conditions with respect to proposed building plans, locations, and design. Minor modifications to building plans and footprint have been proposed. The petitioner seeks a finding to confirm that the revised plans are in compliance with the conditions in the existing variance decision and are to amend and modify the existing variance decision so as to approve the proposed modification and endorse the new plans. Now, somebody will give me a plan that I can reference, please, because I...
I'll throw you right there.
Okay.
And I got your bag.
I'd like to reference a plan on North End of Mas drawn by Endover Consultants dated December 20, 2016. Is that the plan you want me to reference?
And revised, there's a revised after.
Revision.
Yeah, but where's the revised plan?
Is there a date?
Yeah, because this is the old one that I have.
This is all I have in my packet?
It's revised September 20, 2018.
Revision.
Okay. I'd like to reference a plan drawn by Endover Consultants that has been revised for September, on September 13, 2018, by Endover Consultants.
Is that it?
This is it.
Right.
Okay.
So this is the old one, so someone else got to give them a new packet.
All right. Okay, we're going to start this over again. I'd like to reference a plan drawn by Endover Consultants dated September 26, 2018. They showed the plot plan of the proposed dwelling and the leaching field and the lot lines. I'd also like to, hold on, let's see how I can differentiate the plans from...
The opposite of the plans.
Right. Okay, so one plan, the plan is numbered for one or two.
Yeah, Lot 1 and Lot 2 are in the title of the plan at the bottom right here.
What does it say, Lot 1?
Where are both the dates?
Oh, I see, I see, yeah. Lot 2. Okay, reference the plan on Lot 2 dated September 26, 2018, and a plan date for system on Lot 1 dated the same date, September 26, 2018. There are two separate plans that are being referenced here.
Make one comment, just make sure we have it correct. When I submitted this originally, there's, there were also the building plans, and then the septic plan, I think that's being referenced, is the one that is, I believe this is the one that shows the red on it, correct?
The two of them, Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Yeah.
So you have a different Mylar, right?
Right, and there is, there was also a different Mylar that was submitted.
Okay, but which is not in our packet.
Um, I was, I think it was in the original.
The original one.
It was in the original, but not in the new one, correct?
Okay.
So, just, just to be clear, the actual building plans were what was in the original one.
But they've changed, so...
No, no, when I say original, I'm saying there's two originals. There was the October 18th that I submitted, that letter.
So this is, this is one, so your, your building plans from WA Hurley and Associates?
Yep, yep.
Dated 10/1?
Correct.
You want us to reference those?
Those are, those are the correct ones.
A1, A2, A3, A4, same thing as A1 for Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Correct. And I just want to make sure that because the septic plans were really for informational purposes, they're the same, but it shows, you know, both the old and the new on it. It's probably better not to reference those as the decision and be clear that it's in here, the, that what was submitted with the October 18th letter are the actual building plans and the Mylar.
Okay.
And what was submitted on, on October 18th is the, the plan that's dated, dated 20, 2016.
I just said it, so it's fine.
Revised September 20th, 2018? That's, that's the Mylar?
I was about to give you the right things. We just, you just added a second to it. It wasn't all...
I think that's a complete motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So that is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want this for your, for your file?
We've got, I've got a smaller version.
Okay.
Valerie, do you want, no.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda, of course, I've misplaced my agenda, is there's a rule change that we've been talking about for a handful of months. I've submitted to Valerie the text of the proposed rule change, which is to eliminate the requirement for applicants to submit Mylars. It appears to be kind of outdated. There is no prohibition against applicants submitting Mylars, but there doesn't appear to be enough benefit, appears to be no benefit for the underlying cost associated with them. So this is just the text of the rule change. If the rule change is made, then we will go and revise the application materials, which naturally parrot the rules.
So what do we sign, Ben? So what is it that we're signing? So we're not signing in anything at the end? You know, we signed a Mylar, so we'll sign a paper?
Sign a paper, yeah.
A paper, okay.
Likely 11 by 17.
Okay. I, I have no problem with this, believe it or not.
This, this is something that has...
Just because it's consistent?
Yeah. Edification, yes, yes, ma'am. Edification of the, of the Board. This is something that has been vetted through Town Council. Valerie has run back and forth to Suzanne to make sure that we are not running afoul of a requirement that we don't necessarily know about, but practitioners and practitioners have said that there's no need for Mylar out there in the world, and Suzanne has confirmed that trend, as well as there is no underlying obligation that we are somehow papering over. So we're not, we're not in contravention of anything by eliminating the Mylar requirement in our rules.
And I believe last time we discussed this, it was pointed out that the registrar now archives everything digitally and that they would not keep the Mylar anyway.
Yep.
And so the lifetime purposes of the document are not necessary anymore.
There.
Properties of the...
It's a sound, practical observation.
It's in the cloud. You know, I have no problem with that, so I'm on board, so I'll make a motion, unless anyone else says on the end.
And everyone can say, just going to say it out loud again for the, for the legions at home, that this is something that needs to be introduced and then approved. So it's introduced tonight, yes, we're going to approve it, and then there will be a vote again in next month's, this will appear again on next month. It's just the way the rules are written. It needs to go through twice. Make sure nobody has cold feet or a change of heart or something.
Really?
Give people a chance to object if they need to.
All right.
Yep.
I, I welcome this. You introduced me, I welcome this with open arms.
All right.
Being the Italian that I am, you know.
So then, unless there's any more discussion, there should be a motion.
So moved.
I make a motion to...
I already did it.
Oh, you already did it?
Oh, so.
Did I second it?
So, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No, so that is unanimous. The last thing that is not on the agenda and that I missed, quite frankly, is that there are supposed to be elections for Board officers every January. Every January, we didn't put it on the agenda. We should not be approaching it in a public meeting without it being on the agenda, so it will appear on next month's agenda.
Let me fly, let me chair, you know that.
So what are the officers?
There's...
Chair.
Chair, Chair Vice Chair, and Clerk are the three officers, offices.
You interested?
I don't, well, I don't think I, associate members can run for that anyway, but...
But you are allowed to.
At a minimum, you're, at a minimum, you're voting, gosh darn it.
Are we done, right?
But the longer, if there's a longer conversation, it's that there's, there's been an effort both from the Board of Selectmen and other boards and Town Manager, and I'm in full throat of support that we kind of get, get into a rhythm of rotating the chair so that one person does not hold the gavel for such a lengthy period of years. There's nothing that prohibits or prevents us from having one person hold the gavel for, you know, eight, 10, 25 years. I don't necessarily think that's healthy for the organization, but the Board, it is, absolutely, it's the Board's will. If the Board wants someone for two, three, five, seven, 25 years, then the Board is welcome to have that. It's my suggestion that we don't go down that path, but nonetheless, we will have elections next month.
If, oh, you can serve him for one year.
So the answer is, the answer is, it's been a short year. I think the appointment finally, it was like June, April, April or May, something like that.
Half a year.
And I am, I am in a hurry to cede the gavel, so to the extent that anybody wants it, again, with every ounce of sincerity in my body, you're wel, welcome to it. I'm happy to, happy to serve and do the job and create the heartache for Valerie all these, all these many months, but...
So, and here's my opinion on that. It's like, I don't feel that a year is enough. I, I feel that two years is actually a good amount of time, because the first year is a learning.
I agree.
And I think in the two years, you get all the experience of seeing not only a deck, but sometimes you'll see a 40B, and sometimes, there's so many different aspects of each application that I think two years is a good time.
I don't want to see a 40B, by the way.
Neither do I.
I mean, and sitting here, I, I value the experience that, that I see you people have. I mean, there's a lot of wisdom that comes from what you've seen.
There, it's actually, just believe it or not, and this seat is extremely harder than you think.
Oh, I, no, no, I...
It's, there's a lot of back, there's a lot, depending on the applications in front of you and the projects that are out in the town, there's a lot of meetings that attend to, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of texting, a lot of, a lot of stuff.
So in, in taking a bite, taking a whack or an extension of the thing you were saying earlier, that a year is not enough to, to his plenty, it would be, it would be my suggestion, again, there is nothing that binds the Board to it. I would suggest that there be kind of a natural succession of things, where if a person puts in a year or two as clerk, then they, then they would kind of ascend to become the Vice Chair, and then the Vice Chair would kind of lock them in, automatically ascend to the chair.
And then there's, and then there's the chair, and then the Board's like, I don't know, you take it, uh-uh, you take it, I don't want it, you take it, uh-uh.
I wholly expect that, but if we can, if we can change that cycle so that everybody has an expectation of ascending to chair, then there may, there may not be necessarily the pushing in along kind of thing. But nonetheless, again, nothing to bind us to it.
So, is that, Alan, are you the, is Alan the clerk?
No.
Oh, who's the clerk?
Mr. Kooch has been serving as clerk since we lost our clerk, we lost our...
I said Alan.
Oh, you said Alan, oh.
Alan, you're Vice Chair, you've been here a period of time. Have you had the gavel in the past?
I have had the gavel for many years, yes.
Why, how could I, how was that evident to me?
And I gave it up willingly.
So what, what I found...
Oh, no, you haven't.
No, I haven't. Because it's easier to say stuff as Vice, as opposed to Chair. It's, you, you have a stronger voice as a Vice Chair as you do opposed to, but then again, I sometimes had a very strong voice as Chair, so, I mean, it depends.
When have you not? What I discovered this week, frankly, with Valerie's help, is I was asking her for a, for a snapshot of appointment dates.
Oh, yeah, that was interesting for me as well.
You can see when folks expire, that's easily readable, that's readily available on, you know, the website, but it's not clear when people were appointed. I frankly, I don't even remember when I was appointed. I'm sure I could go look it up, but I don't remember.
I think 2011.
I was most curious about when Madam Vice Chair was appointed, because...
It was actually, to be honest, I thought yours was even before that. Like, I thought she had been, I thought you had been on this longer than what, because when do you think your appointment date, do you remember?
Yeah, I looked at it.
Yeah, I shared it, I shared it with her.
Is that right? Is that right?
I thought it was longer, too. I thought it was more 25 as opposed to 23, 22, 23, yeah.
So the spreadsheet that Valerie was able to forward...
It feels like 30.
The spreadsheet that Valerie forwarded to me included everybody's date of appointment, you know, to the day, because it's 6:30, 2000, whatever it was for everybody.
I don't think mine's right.
And Ellen's did not have June 30th, you know, whatever it was, or September 12th, or October, whatever. It just said 1996. So it's like, it's, it seems as though the town doesn't actually know when Ellen was appointed to the Board.
Yeah, and you write this down, yeah.
And it's, I don't think that's accurate, because I think I was on prior.
Maybe that was when the record keeping started.
When they had the advocates coming over.
The flood of the fire.
They just used to do it like this.
So, yes, Ellen was, Ellen was Chair and has been Vice Chair an awful lot, and so even as Vice Chair, she has, in an effort to dodge Chair responsibilities, was, handed an awful lot of stuff in the past, like when I was, when I was saying I don't want a 40B, it's because the last 40B, the only 40B that I've sat on, Ellen chaired it because the Chair was, the Chair at the time was conflicted out of it. So in spite of her effort to not be Chair, she got the thorniest, most miserable, it's a fine project and fine set of hearings, but it is, it is an...
It's tedious.
Running a 40B is an ungodly amount of work and time, just for the regular Board members, and it is, it is 10x for whomever is holding the gavel for those, because they're just peer review stuff all the time and walkthroughs, and I, I mean, I don't even, I don't even know, because I didn't do the Chair, thank heavens, you know, back then, for the 40B.
It's a lot.
So hopefully, I get to cede the gavel before another 40B comes down. That'd be awesome.
It's your own version of Russian roulette.
There is that. So if we've, if we've exhausted that, then perhaps there should be a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, we are adjourned.